Okay, guys, it's 5:30. I'd like to call the meeting to order at this time. I'd like to ask Bryce to come and give us the opening prayer.
Let us pray. Good Lord, thank you so much for this day. Thank you so much for these council members that you placed in their positions. Give them some guidance and wisdom as they serve the city God. Thank you so much for our fire department, North Police Department, all who serve our community and protect them and guide them in safety. That. Lord, thank you so much for your son, all that he has done for us. Is that my prayer?
Ladies and Davis, would you please clarify the role?
The spinner and the sinker are absent. No one is present.
All right. Is there a motion approved in minutes from the previous meeting?
So moved.
Motion second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the prepared agenda?
Motion. Second.
Motion second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next on the agenda, the citizens' comments. Comments must be no longer than three minutes in length. It must pertain to city business. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address the council? Not. We'll go ahead and move forward. And unfinished business, Mr. Damon Johnson, public works engineer, can give us a kind of a rundown. I know we had, we put this on the first reading last time, and if you would, maybe kind of explain what it is. Basically, again, I know we had a little cheat sheet or something handed out, so I don't know if they still have that in there.
I hope y'all brought those back. So essentially, you know, this is the rate ordinance, but we're not updating any of the rates or anything. It's just a small section on how we deal with the cutoff fees when we turn people back on, when they get cut off. It's some procedural things that we cleaned up. It's essentially, the way the ordinance is written, there's a pretty heavy fee for an after hour reconnect. If you get this, there's some, there's some things that we figured out don't work in the real world. And so, and so we've kind of adjusted how we deal with some of those situations, but we want the ordinance to be the way that we're, we think is the most effective, efficient way. And so that's all the changes are. And of course, those are kind of lined out on the cheat sheet. I didn't bring one with me tonight either. But, you know, it's, it's just kind of some procedural things. It's, it's pretty minor stuff, really, but we want to be sure that we are not operating outside of what the ordinance, you know, line lays out essentially. So that, that's the point of this. It's, it's the bulk of the ordinance. Ninety-nine percent of it is exactly the same as it was the day we originally, you guys passed in, so.
Yeah. And with that being said, I know I've had some individuals to ask about the rate structure and the fees. So if we can talk about that separately during maybe mayor's comments, if you would, come back up maybe, and we'll talk about the rate fees, how we charge and all that.
Okay.
Because there has been some questions about that and we'll-
About rates.
What concerns about the poultry plants and everything, but if we could do that. But with, with all that being said, is there a motion to read the ordinance by title only?
So moved.
Okay.
Okay. Is there, is there a second?
I think she said-
Oh, we had a second. I'm sorry. Okay. Motion second. Hey, council, please cast your votes. Okay, Mr. Meissen?
Yes, sir. An ordinance applies to a decent rates to be charged by Batesville Water Sewer Utilities for work related to water and sewer services declaring emergency for emergencies.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Okay.
Bladen, did you mean to-
No, I didn't.
Okay.
I can re-vote.
Probably won't let you, but I'll make a note of it.
Call yourself a lawyer.
Guys, stay your ground here.
Okay. Now, with, with that being said, do you guys, what are your wishes? You would like to put that on the third reading, or would you like to go ahead and hear it on out to get this ordinance?
It's, it's whatever's best for y'all. I mean, waiting two more weeks doesn't really matter to us operationally, or you can pass it tonight.
Totally fine either way. Assuming y'all are good with, with the changes.
We know we're gonna do it, but we'll put it to bed tonight.
Yeah. Well, I just, just want to make sure. Okay. Not, is there a motion to further spin the rules and waive the third reading?
Motion. Second. I said I'd do it.
Oh, you got a motion? Okay.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Okay. Uh, is there-
This is for witnesses.
Hey, please, please cast your votes.
All right. Thank you, guys, for that.
Okay. Now, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Hold on. Hold on.
Hang on.
Hold on.
Sorry. Sorry.
Okay, Mr. Meissen, would you please read the emergency clause?
Sir, that due to municipal growth, the need for air and water media, therefore it is further found an emergency exists in this ordinance being necessary for the preservation of public peace, health, and safety shall take effect from and after its passage in procedure.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the emergency clause?
Motion.
Second.
Motion second. Council, please cast your votes. Okay. Next on the agenda is to consider resolution adopting City of Batesville's comprehensive safety action plan. And Damon, you want to go ahead and kind of give us a segue into that?
Sure.
You talked about it last time.
Yeah. First, I'll invite Doug to come up here. He's, he's with our consultant engineer who, company who helped us, McKinley Horn, who, who helped us with this.
Yeah. Doug, you've been here before, right?
Oh, yeah.
Glad to have you. Good to see you.
Appreciate it.
Well.
So essentially, you know, I think y'all had the two hard copies still. And hopefully that everybody who has wanted to has had an opportunity to review that. The, you know, we were awarded a Safe Streets For All planning grant two years ago, and we brought on McKinley Horn and Doug to help us kind of navigate that. This is a federal highway, step in any time, because Doug knows ten times more about it than I do. This is a federal highway, highways program. The planning grant, basically, the point of it is for us to study our road system, to look at our significant injuries and deaths, and to create a plan to reduce those to zero over time. It's not a short term plan. It's a long term plan. And so, you know, we, we've spent the last two years essentially doing, going through the process and gathered lots of information. Doug and his team, you know, have done an amazing job. The, the book that you guys have been passing around is kind of the final result. And of course, the, the point of this also is with this program, there will be continually future grant opportunities through the Safe Streets For All federal program, as long as it continues to be funded and exists. And that we will now, since we have a planning grant, be able to go apply for grants. If they fall into the plan, you know, we will have, have a higher likelihood of receiving those grants.
I'll, I'll just add a couple of things. So you have a demonstration grant that we talked about, that y'all are getting under contract with FHWA to do some additional work. But the next level of grants is the implementation grant through the program. So you have to have the safety action plan in place to be eligible for implementation grant application. So this is the first step to make the city eligible and be able to submit funding applications for that next level. You can take this and submit for further grants under the SSFOI program. You can also take this and submit under other federal grant programs, too. But the, but specifically, you have to have the action plan in place. And so the resolution has some key things in there that are required by FHWA to be in the resolution, the goal, the commitment to, the goal that we developed in the plan, and then the adoption of the actual resolution. And so I'd be glad to answer any questions about the process or anything that we did as part of the plan development. So.
Yep. Y'all have any questions about what you reviewed, you know, as far as the plan goes, or any questions about the resolution?
I don't have any questions about the plans. Great job. Well, well written. The, I'm just curious if you have a roadmap for best practices. When, when the city gets to this level and has, has completed that study, are there any silver bullets out there that seem to work best for cities, particularly as it comes to funding? I know that it makes us eligible for some of those grants, but is there, is there any other, any other avenues out there that, that really try to maximize our bang for a buck?
Yeah. So a lot of the federal funding programs are, are dedicated to certain, they're all dedicated to different areas of priority or focus areas, right? It's like this one specifically to fatal and serious injury crashes, like Damon made a wrench, mentioned to. But any, any of the corridors or intersections that have a history of fatal or serious injury crashes definitely help from a competitive standpoint, right? All of the grant, federal grant programs are all competitive based. And so each one has kind of different criteria that they're looking for. But safety, pretty recurrently over the last few years, especially under this current infrastructure bill that we're in, safety has been involved in all the criteria for all of these grants. So when looking at locations that have a historical or have history of fatal or serious injury crashes, those are ones that tend to show really well and are competitive in these grant application programs. I mean, so that's definitely something that, that you can use out of this that would help. So I will, I will add this, like with the changing of the federal administration, priorities change as well, right? And we've, we've seen that in all of our federal grant programs. So in the previous administration, equity was a big component. So we looked at disadvantaged census tract data and developed prioritization of locations and projects based on some of that previous. And then the administration changed kind of in the middle of finalizing this document. So we did put a second section in there that, the first section, when it comes to like the prioritization, the equity component, based on the previous guidelines. We have a second section in there that's kind of based on current guidelines. So that we, there's some flexibility in the city going forward as far as which kind of criteria you can use for funding programs. Because ultimately, if the federal administration changes again, changes again, and equity becomes another component that's added back in, you've got that in here still. So you've got some flexibility in how we develop a document going forward with, with criteria and priorities based on the different federal programs.
Okay. Would someone like to introduce the resolution?
I will.
Is there a motion to read the resolution by title only?
So moved. Second.
Motion second. Council, please cast your votes. Okay, Mr. Meissen, please read the resolution by title only.
Yes, sir. Resolution adopting the City of Batesville Comprehensive Safety Action Plan.
Not any further discussion. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Cast your votes, council. Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Next on the agenda is to consider a resolution authorizing the mayor to apply for a grant on the FAA on behalf of the Batesville Regional Airport. Would someone like to introduce the resolution?
I will.
Is there a motion to read the resolution by title only?
So moved. Second.
Motion second. Please cast your votes. Mr. Meissen?
Yes, sir. Resolution authorizing the mayor of the City of Batesville, Arkansas, to apply for a grant from the Federal Aviation Administration on behalf of the Batesville Regional Airport Commission.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Not. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion.
Second.
Motion second. Please cast your votes. Okay. I guess now it's the mayor's comments. First of all, our next meeting will be on May the 13th. And also, last time, we did an approval for the purchase of the, from the perpetual maintenance account for the slide restoration activity. And the good news is, we passed the first part of it. But the bad news is, there was another 28,000 on it. So anything to do with the swimming pools are fairly expensive. So that was half of the payment. So we probably should have waited and done all of it, but let's go ahead. If I could get a, possibly a motion to, no, I'm just mentioning.
Yeah, we have two of them, so.
Yes. Let's go ahead and read the other one. Also, another from Blue Water. That's a company that works on pools, and they just replastered the therapy pool in the plate, in the play pool resurfacing. And that was $63,140. And so both of those, the 28,348 and the 63,140, would be coming out of the perpetual maintenance, which I'm not sure what the balance is in that fund, but I'm sure it's, you have that.
It will be 686,337 after these two.
After these two. Okay. 686. Still.
Motion.
Does he need?
Yes.
I can move. Make a motion for approval and have a second. Okay. Any further discussion? Not. All in favor signify by saying aye. Okay, opposed, like sign. Okay, Damon, if I can get you back up here. We have had somewhat of a discussion, and I know we had this discussion going fairly, I'm not sure if it's good, but the breach of the, the subject is our poultry plants. And we've got a, the stench, the smell. We have 2019 in that area. We sent, I sent a letter basically, basically asking them to do upgrades, be a good steward. Over the years, we have seen some upgrades. They have shared some of those with us. Our community is, say the least, it's, it's something that, it's been challenging. The, both of the poultry plants, I'd say we do have a relationship with them. We've worked with OMP. We know how valuable they are to economic development in our community. They employ a lot of folks. And all we're asking for them to do is just be good stewards. I checked with OMP this week, two, three years ago. They, they actually said, hey, we're gonna build a new treatment plant. So yesterday, I basically, their attorney, Mr. George, I know relation to the George family, he basically just said, well, the volume does not show that. And I text him every time there's a bad day. There's a bad day, I'll send, send them so they're aware of it. And I say every time, I mean, I could do that three or four days in a row, but I may text them and then make sure that they are aware of it. Pico, I have it at different times, but like I said, I've had, one individual says, you know, we, we give them water. No, we do not give them water. There is a reduce, there's a breakdown of it. So I would like Damon Maseby, just to talk a little bit about how we charge for the water and everything.
So, you know, on the, with water sales, essentially, there's a, a minimum for the first thousand gallons that every customer pays, and it's based on the size of the water meter. So as a residential customer, which we all are, that minimum for the, if you only use a thousand gallons or less, your bills, just for water, this, we're not talking about water sewer, or we're not talking about sewer and trash and then taxes, but just the, the charge for a water meter for a, a residential meter is $13.30 right now. The poultry, they each have an eight inch meter, so their base charge is $2,126.10. That's for the first thousand gallons of water that they use. Essentially, that's just the, for having the meter. And so then after the, the minimum, and what, the way our step is, and every customer pays the, the same rate, every customer inside the C limits, I should say, pays the exact same rate. It's just based on the volume of water used. So the first 100,000 gallons, we all pay $5.11 per thousand gallon. So every time you use a thousand gallons, it's $5.11 is added to the bill, up to 100,000 gallons. If you're a business that used, and we have a lot, that use more than 100,000 gallons, then the rate drops from $5.11 to $3.89 per thousand gallons. And then that rate holds until you reach 2 million gallons. And this is all per month. And so, of course, these rates are, are on our website. Anybody can go see them if they have questions, and I'm happy to help answering questions. So after 2 million gallons, then there's another step down per thousand, and it goes from $3.89 to $3.05 per thousand gallons. And that is the, the last step down. So if you use 6 million gallons of water one month in your business, the last 4 million gallons will be at the, the $3.05. And then the first, you know, you've got the 100,000 and the 2 million doll, 2 million gallon step down. Does that make sense? Did I explain that well? So essentially, like, there's no special rate for anybody. It's just a volume. You get a volume discount. The more you use, the, the more discount you get. The, for informational purposes, the over 2 million gallon rate, we did a quick check, the only two customers who realize that are the poultry. No, no other customer, the hospital is the only other customer that gets close, and they don't reach 2 million gallons a month on any individual meter. So, you know, that's something to be aware of. The, the over 2 million gallons is only you, only, the poultry right now are the only two. Now, this rate structure was developed, the dollar amounts weren't, but was developed actually, I don't know, I mean, 30 years ago or 40 years ago. And my assumption is that it was set up in this way as a incentive for those companies to grow and stay here. When, if you do some research, water utilities don't all have, do similar rate structures, but many utilities who have large water user industries have step downs like this. It's very common, in, in other words. And of course, their steps might be at different places. And of course, their price per thousand is based on their operational expenses and, you know, their water sales. So, I mean, there's lots of variables. But, you know, if we want to have a discussion about, I mean, you know, I, you know, like, like the mayor said, there's, guys had some questions. And so I just wanted to be sure, like, you know.
I guess in terms of conserving natural resources, in terms of, it feels like you're kind of rewarding somebody for using more instead of maybe kind of-
They're required by the FDA to use a minimum amount of water per bird that they process. And so they're not really allowed to be conservationists. They're, they're required. And I don't, I'm not an expert in poultry processing, but I do know that they are, they have a, a minimum requirement of water that they have to use per bird, per bird, or they are, have some kind of issue with the FDA. And so I don't know what that number is. I don't know how many birds they process, so I don't know how that plays into their water usage, but I know that it, it has an impact. I think that they would use a lot less water if they could. They tried, Pico did in the early 2000s, they put in a reuse system, and they determined that it wasn't, it was, it wasn't cost effective for them. They, they thought that they could, their wastewater discharge, instead of discharging it all to us, they would take some of it, process it, put it back into the plant and reuse it. But they, they determined, they decided that that wasn't effective enough. It was more costly for them to do that than just to buy water. And, and also, those, those reuse systems are pretty tough to operate and maintain properly. So, or they used to be. I don't know about a modern one too well. But, so they, they opted out of that. And for a year or two, though, they did, and they greatly reduced their, their water usage. And, but that didn't stick. So, you know, that's something to, like you say, I mean, it's, yes, I mean, we're not really rewarding them for using more water. They have to use that level of water, essentially.
I'm just, I'm talking about in terms of the volume discounting.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I guess it's like, you can look at it like any business, the more you buy, the, at most sectors, you, you get a little bit of a discount. You know, it's, look, I'm not, you know, all things are open to discussion. There's, I don't have a hard line. I do think that if we want to discuss about changing the, the stats, changing the system that they've operated in for decades, we probably need to have conversations as a group with them, you know, and kind of-
But I think it'd be, just in terms of this, that rate structure was set up however long ago.
Yeah.
In terms of revisiting, you know, what, what their usage requirements are and, you know, where we're at with things.
Right.
If that's a question.
How does that affect the rate study?
Well, we would essentially, if we were to change the rate structure, we would have to read, we would have to redo the rate study. Yes. We have a rate study that we, that we finished a year or two ago. So we could, I mean, it shouldn't be starting, it wouldn't be started from scratch.
What did that rate study cost?
The rate study? I don't remember the exact amount. Hundred grand, 150 maybe?
It's expensive.
Yeah. I mean, they, they take a lot of man hours, and you gotta, it's not a, a greenhorn who engineer, it's somebody to do a rate study. You generally, somebody who's got a lot of experience, which means their hourly rate's pretty high. So, yeah, I mean, we, we, it would definitely, if we were to change this, I, I think it would only be fair to the, to the system, to all the payers. It, it may change, it would change our outlook on, on our rates, for sure, if we were to-
How much more than 2 million did those guys get?
Um, Tim, I, I need your advice on, a lot. I'll, I'll say that. So, so their, their usage is, if I understand it correctly, is a protected, like, I don't want to say on the public record how many gallons they use a month, because I think that's, as an industry, like how much water they use is, is proprietary to their processes.
Right. This can't fool you radically, that information.
Right. So.
Got that last year.
I'll, I'll just say a whole lot. I can tell you off the record how many gallons they use a month, but.
I think you just get name who's who, but I mean, I kind of think-
Well, there's only two, so I don't, if there were seven of them, I'd throw some numbers out, and you'd never know who's who.
So I can do that.
Three, yeah.
Well, so Custom Craft is actually on Piper System.
Okay.
So they buy water from Piper. Now, they discharge into our sewer system, so we send them a sewer bill as well.
Do we have any sort of federal guidelines as far as utility rates? Are we required to be within a certain amount per gallon? Is there any regulatory oversight that prohibits us from 100% determining our rates?
Act 605, which is Arkansas act that's relatively new, that you guys have been taking that class on, they're the only oversight. And so there is, and it's not about price per gallon or price per thousand. It's, it's, they want your rates to be high enough where you have a certain percentage, you're able to have a certain percentage of your operations budget, budget set aside in savings. So when you have a, a problem, you have cash on hand to deal with it. That's not really the only oversight. Until Act 605 was published, zero oversight.
So I know likely electricity and other utilities, there are strict, you know, regulations on, on rates. So my question really then becomes, if it's ever, becomes, you know, part of our discussion, if we have 100% autonomy on determining our rates, if we also have the unilateral ability to rescind high volume water rates for industrial users that are not being good stewards of the environment and amputate- Water rates for industrial users that are not being good stewards of the environment and amputate them consumer rates at that point.
Well, I mean, I think we need to, yes, so I mean, yes, we have the ability to set our rate structure however we want.
Certainly various community by community, some, you know.
Some people, some communities that have no serious water users, other, you know, no large water users. They'll just have one flat rate that everybody pays. Um, and then, so the, I mean, the only thing I would say to that is, is. We need to weigh all the consequences of that and we need to understand that. No matter what anybody says, we do not want those two plants to go away. And so we do not want to act in such an aggressive manner that they go away. Um, the consequence of that, and I'll be happy, I can just lay them out from a water utility standpoint. Are pretty sub, the, the, we, we can have some pretty serious consequences. Um, that would be detrimental to our community just from what I manage, not from the other things that they touch. So, um, we have to be smart, is what I'm saying. We need to try to, if they are willing. Work together as a group to un, help them understand. Um, you know. We need, we need y'all to cooperate, be a team player. Um, sometimes it's hard to get through to some of the corporate mindset of that.
Yeah, I mean, I found that corporate gets a little defensive when you start prying, uh, you know, more. But like I said, that's our obligation, you know, we definitely want them to be a good steward. You know, we're investing, you know, twenty-five million dollars across the road from them, so.
Yeah.
Um, and, and like I said, I've met with them and you won't find any nicer individuals to work with, but at the end of the day, you know. We, we have a community that, uh, uh, is, uh, they're, they're aggravated. And a lot of times they feel like that we're not doing enough, but you know, just like you said. There's not an EPA regulation that they're actually, I mean, they've been called many times, or poultry. And uh, all they have is, no, they're in compliance. They're in compliance. We cannot. Well, Damon, can you elaborate on, one other question I was gonna have. Damon, can you, um, uh, will other communities that have poultry? Uh, uh, factories or companies, will they share with you their, maybe their water, their stuff, they have a step rate?
Oh yeah, I mean, most places you can look up online.
You can look online, because I'd be curious, you know, at the Springdales and.
We did, yeah, they have a step rate. I did, when, when we did our rate study, and again, that's two years old. Um, but we did some rate comparisons. And I looked for, uh, communities that have large water users, food processors. In their communities and most of those communities that I found had some type of steps. Um, of course, I don't necessarily know how much water those plants use. So it's hard to, to gauge exactly, but al- almost all the, the one, the food processors that I'll. You know, in Arkansas, I didn't go outside Arkansas, I only looked at communities in Arkansas.
And I'm sure Jonesboro would be a high user, a lot of their.
I'm sure, sure they would.
Yeah, a lot of.
Jonesboro, Jonesboro's kind of an anomaly, because that's like a private, um, utility.
Yeah.
Um, and they're subsidized, they're, they have a, a energy or electric cooperative that subsidizes their water utility. So, um, I don't look at them for anything, because it's, they're kind of a little.
But could you, could you kind of talk on the regulatory end of it, you know, like ADQ and I mean, so is, uh.
Yes, so as far as implementing regulations regarding the odor. Tim and I have done quite a bit of research on this. I've spoke with a handful of other attorneys about this. Um, who've reached out to me. I didn't go to them, they came to me. Um, you know, why aren't we regulating the odor? Why don't we have a nuisance regulation? Why, why, you know, why aren't you doing anything? So A, Arkansas, there's no, um. There's no, nothing in Arkansas law that affords anyone to regulate nuisance odor anywhere. Um, there are some states who have statutes that set standards for nuisance odors. And allow local communities to, Texas is one, um, to regulate and enforce. Um, you know, nuisance odor problems in their communities. But Arkansas doesn't have anything on the books that allows, um, local communities or anyone, even the state. To do, to have any kind of nuisance odor regulations. On top of that, um, Arkansas code eight dash four dash three oh six actually, uh, preempts. Local communities and, and says that, um, we do not have the right and cannot. Regulate anything to do with air pollution. I'm not reading the law verbatim clearly, but. It essentially gives the right of that to the state. All air pollution issues are the states. That gives the, eight dash four dash three oh si- six, gives the state all the, the right to control those regulations. And, and says that cities and local governments have no right. And so when other communities in the state have tried to do something, they pretty immediately lose because of this. And I've had, um, like I said, multiple attorneys who have reached out to me and said, I'll help you write the regulation. And I'm like, well, you can figure out how to get around this one. And I've had a couple say, I will. I never heard from them again. And, um, our advice from the municipal league and the research that Tim has done is. Until they change this, there's no getting around it. We can't do anything. Um, and if we do. Uh, we're just going to get, and of course Russell was the most recent example, we're just gonna get sued. By billion dollar corporations until we give up, um, and quit. And, and they know it. That's, that's correct. So, um. That's kind of why we don't regulate.
It's not because we don't want to, because we're just as frustrated as the.
I mean, we're, we're, yeah, our hands are completely.
And so basically what you're saying, it would have to go through the legislative process. Our legislators, our senators, but number one, what kind of state are we? We're an agriculture state. So they're gonna protect agriculture and rightly so, guys, because I mean, you know, we, we know individuals that. You know, that, that are, that are farmers, several of them, you know, in the state of Arkansas. Damon, so we determined what plant has put the smell out.
So I would say, in my opinion, both.
Because they both blame each other.
Right, they, I mean, if you, in, on any given day, if, if there's an odor problem. If you approach either one, oftentimes you will get, oh, it's not me, it's the other one. Um, and, and based on what I have experienced. I would say that on any given day, it could be one or the other. They both have, have, um. The ability to cause odor to happen. Uh, uh, so, I mean, I, I think that. Um, you know, I don't, I don't, I'm, I'm not gonna offer solutions to their problems. It's, it's their, their, their problem to solve. Um, I will say you can go to Springdale and. There's not an odor problem, um, but they built that plant. Then you can go to other communities that have large kill plants of any kind. Um, poultry or beef or pork and, and odor is not a problem in a lot of those cities. I'm sure there are some cities where odor is a problem. Um, my point to that is, is it's a, clearly a solvable problem. Because there are kill plants that have very little or no odor. Um, and, um, so, but it's up to them to, to do that. And, and the, the, the struggle with, back to the regulatory, ADQ has investigated. The, um, they, they've been called many times by citizens in our community. And my understanding is that they do not find anything. What we have is a nuisance. We don't have things in the, uh, according to current. Regulatory standards, what's in the, the, what they measure in the air is not harmful to human. You know, to humans. It's, it's unpleasant, which quantifies it as a nuisance, but it's not pollution. The ADQ, because it doesn't meet whatever the, the guidelines that are currently adopted. By the EPA and the Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality. So if, if they don't regulate nuisances, they only regulate what they determine to be harmful. Um, and, and when it comes to air pollution, and so that's why they don't do anything. Um, so we're kind of stuck in this kind of weird limbo where Arkansas law, like the mayor said, essentially. Protects the agri industry, including odor, nuisance odors, and does not afford anyone. The opportunity to regulate nuisance odor problems.
Damon, two, two things. Um, first of all, to the, to the question about. Uh, determining where, where the smell's coming from, I, I think you're dead on right that, um, it could be either or both. At any particular day. Uh, and of course, when there is, when there is a call made, they rightfully so. Point to each other. So it would seem to me that part of this solution, there's not going to be a silver bullet solution. That's going to take care of everything. I understand that. But to start addressing it, you have to start measuring it. And, and what I mean by that is if other states, and I very well laid out that. We're really restricted in Arkansas as to what we can do, I understand that. But if other sta- other states have the ability to. To regulate it and monitor it, that means that they measure it. I can't spell engineer, so I don't know what I'm talking about here, but I would think that that would mean that technology exists. That where the smell could be measured. And if that's the case, you could basically triangulate with a series of sensors. Perhaps where that's coming from. Not that, not that you can go out and write a ticket for it, I'm not saying that. But, but first understanding where it's coming from would be helpful. Is that possible?
So we did, um, at one time, consider, uh, doing a study. Um, there are companies out there who will do studies, like what you're talking about. Um, that proposal, we, the, the pos- proposal that we, uh, reviewed once. Um, was about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's probably been, I don't know. Six or eight years, but time, time's funny nowadays. It might be four years ago, it might have been six years ago. It's, it's been a little, little ways back. Um, it would probably be a little more than that today. Um. And my thought process was the same, what, what, you know, when we kind of considered that. And there were some sensors that were proposed to be put out. There were some weather, um. Stations also, because, you know, how the wind's blowing and the humidity and things play into, you know. How, where the odor's traveling to and from and whatnot. I, one of, and of course, that, that kind of didn't work out. Um. But as part of that plan, there was, when complaints came out. There was to be a person who's assigned to go out with a device that they put on their nose and sniffed. And that was the final determinant. It was not a measurement. It was not a, uh, and I, I'll be honest with you. I was like, what? No, I'm on a empirical number. I don't want, uh, um. We don't need data collected by the human.
That's right.
Sniffer. And it was a device, I mean, you, you purchased a rather expensive device. That cleared your nostrils and I don't remember all the things it did. I, I'm not, again, that's not my realm of expertise.
Any part?
Um, do I? Yeah, yeah, but you, you did, it did still have human. Input, I guess I would say, which kind of turned me off.
Devil's advocate here, if we did that study, let's say the perfect world, we did that study and we came back and we found, it's either A or B. Well, we found out it's B. Where do you go from there?
Well, and that's, that's the other point. So when we did that, we tried to include the poultry, because if they don't buy into it, honestly, it's useless. If, if they're not on board, if they, if they don't believe that the process is good and they don't believe in it, and I, I don't know what you do with the.
Which brings me, which brings me to my second point, uh, that I wanted to mention. Um. I understand, I've lived here most of my life. I understand the frustration. I, 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 I get that. I get frustrated too. Um, however, almost all problems are solved with a few people sitting around the table. And, and coming as honest brokers to try to, to try to do their part and contribute what they can to solve the issue. So knowing that what you're saying is exactly right, if we don't have that buy-in upfront. If we don't have that commitment, um, that honesty from the plants, from the city. As far as that's concerned, if they don't feel that we're being upfront and, and constructive in the way that we're going about this. They're not gonna play ball and I don't blame them.
Right.
So, so my thought is, before we, let's, let's try to, let's try to. Work with a, with a carrot. And what I would like to see, I would like to see representatives, just a couple, two or three. At the most, from each plant, from the city, come together and probably, probably bring in. Uh, someone here in the community that's well trusted, uh, that to act just as a facilitator. Not a, not a, uh, not a poultry plant employee, not a, not a city employee, but let's just talk about it. Let's just understand what the problems are. And perhaps, perhaps we could even agree on some sort of measurement, uh, standards. And I agree with you completely. If you can't put a, a quantity behind it, it doesn't exist.
Right.
So, so I have no idea if this would work, but I would really, really like to see us come together. Two or three people, no more than, no more than nine people in that room, ten people, whatever it may be. Facilitated by someone that's known and trusted in the community. And let's see if we can't make some headway.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I, I think it's definitely time for a sit down. I, I, I do think it would be helpful. I mean, the mayor and I have. Had several conversations with them. I think it might be helpful if a couple council members. Were a part of that team who, who, um, sits down and expresses like, hey, like, you know. Whatever heat you're getting from constituency or the public or whatever. And, you know, maybe having this conversation, just having the conversation about the rate structure changes. Might get them a little more serious about having, about, hey, let's talk then, you know, um, is, it would be. I mean, I would prefer that they, if they have to make a choice, we're gonna pay more for water. Or we're gonna invest in our pretreatment. I would prefer that they would invest in their pretreatment. Instead of paying more for water, um, you know. And, you know, I think that might be, hopefully, that sit down, if, if we can facilitate that. Um, that might be a very important part of that conversation that could be had, but you guys. Might, it would be better coming from council who are gonna facilitate the, the change of those rates than. Perhaps me, who they, they'll just say, well, we'll just go to the mayor and the council and we'll just be sure you don't change, you know what I mean, you know, that. So they need to, they, it would, I think it would be helpful to them to understand it, not just the mayor and I coming to them and, and trying to. They feel like we're beating them up, you know, um, and we feel like.
So at my front porch, I'm two blocks away, y'all need to know that.
Yeah.
I can see my front porch.
Right, and I, I would love to be involved and actually was gonna mention that anyway, um, just because I've heard, you know, I know that. Years ago that there was that sit down and that, that there was the potential for things to happen. And then time goes on and nothing's happened. And I don't have answers for people who want to know what we're doing. And so I, that's what I was gonna say, if, if I can be involved, I don't know what I would bring to the table other than I cure it every. Time I turn around, I'm doing this one, what are you gonna do about that smell? And so I just, again, I, I would like to be involved.
I would like, you know, like I said, I, I would like anyone on the council that wanted to be involved. I know we wanted to keep it small, but there's eight of us, I know not all of us, and I think the council needs to be informed. And I would, I would like, you know, like I said, if we could. you know, like I said, if we could get from the, the council and, I mean, are we talking about reaching out in the community, getting anyone or maybe getting somebody to help facilitate it? Is that what you're saying, Ron?
Yeah.
And maybe the council, maybe the council and that facilitator, uh, we could get, uh, with Damon.
I mean, I'm gonna have y'all wanna go.
But I'd want, you know, I'd want, you know, I'd, I'd want all council involved that could make it. Uh, because you guys are the one that represent all the constituents around the, the community. And that would give you guys a better, uh, at least being on the conversation so you can feed, give the feedback to the community. Uh, but like I said, I'm, uh, it's to the point where, you know, I feel like this council is a nucleus. We've, we've worked, we've worked together, we've worked hard and, uh, you know, we're a progressive community. But still, yeah, we've got to have somebody that's gonna play ball with us. And it, it's frustrating. It's frustrating. It's all get out when I drive by there. And I can just feel it because I, I put the pressure on myself. And it's frustrating when you cannot take and, and, uh, you know, you have a problem and you cannot fix it at the end of the day. So, uh, if, if that's okay, I will go ahead and try to maybe work on that. Uh, I've kind of got some individuals in mind that may, maybe try, maybe help kind of facilitate it. Uh, I know that, uh, we even used, um, a gentleman out of Little Rock once to help us get in the door to meet with one of the George families, one of the co-CEOs. This was over the Greenway Trail. But Skip Rutherford stepped in and helped facilitate that. Uh, he's a, you know, Skip's a hometown boy and still loves Batesville, Arkansas. And, uh, so it may be, uh, uh, it may be an, an individual. Uh, we've got, you know, I hate to name some individuals from here without contacting them. Uh, but, uh, uh, but I know there's some individuals out there with who that could be a good voice, someone that can keep a cool head and sit there and not be biased. So let me work on that if the council's good with that.
Yeah.
Um, and, and like I said, I know we've got busy three or four weeks. We've got, you know, parks and tourism, folks are coming to town. Um, I'm, I'm taking a week off, guys, if you guys will let me. But, uh, uh, but, but anyway, um.
You know, I, I would just, uh, I would just add, this, this isn't gonna be solved by one meeting or, or two meetings. Uh, this, I, I think that if we're going to ask for this dialogue, we have to be honest with ourselves and, and, and say, look, we'll commit to at least three, four, five meetings. And let's see if we're making progress by that, at that point in time. And of course, we're gonna have to ask, we're gonna have to ask the poultry plants to do the same thing because it's gonna be a little give and take, uh, on all sides. It's not gonna be solved overnight. But, but hopefully bringing everyone together through honest brokers, uh, I think they wanna solve the problem. I think they do. But they, they also have a bottom line that they have to protect. So let's figure out how we can work together to make it happen.
Do you have a insight as to why you think it comes and goes? Is there a, is there a factor? Is it, is it excessive rain triggers?
No. In my, in my opinion, this is just my opinion. It's their sludge handling. So as they're.
Hook that thing.
When they, yes.
Hook that thing and come right at you.
So when they, they, uh, both plants do pretreatment and essentially their pretreatment processes don't really create much odor. If you got clothes, it might be a little musty, but it's, it's not, it's not the smell you smell. In my opinion, the smell we smell is, is, and of course their pretreatment, like all wastewater treatment creates a sludge. And they, they put that sludge into storage and it goes septic and it builds up in their tanks. And then when it's time to empty those sludge containers, they put it in trucks and they haul it offside and dispose of it, however they dispose of it. That process of moving it from the, the containment on site to the truck, which takes several trucks, you know, to empty a large tank. Um, there's air exchange and that air exchange is septic, pretty rough air. Um, and that's, and that's, in my view, unless they're having some kind of upset or some kind of problem, that's, that's the cause. And, and oftentimes, um, in the past, they have tried to do that in the wee hours of the night so that when fewer people are out moving around. And so a lot of times why I think we smell it in the mornings is maybe they're kind of running up in the morning hauling sludge off and, and releasing that. Of course, the cool air off the river doesn't help either.
Humidity.
And, and humidity and it traps it, you know? And so there's, there's certain environmental conditions that make it worse and, and that kind of almost trap it down here in the downtown and St. Louis area, um, in my view. And then also kind of how they deal with their sludge is what creates it in the first place. Um, now they may have something else they might point out, but they may disagree with me. But based on what I've seen at their facilities and their pretreatment stuff, their pretreatment stuff is all pretty good. Um, it's, it just creates sludge and you gotta deal with it. And it's not.
How do other people deal with sludge?
Well, so like a modern plant, all that stuff is a lot more compact and it's, they put it in, inside a building and they put air scrubbers on that building. And so that stinky air is contained inside a building and it's not released until it's clean. And they don't have these, these, they're, both of our facilities, um, sludge handling tanks are just sitting outside in the parking lot. And so like Fred said, as they connect and disconnect trucks and have air, and of course, when you pump it, you know, you gotta have air exchange, you, you know, or you'll create a vacuum. So, um, you know.
Same like if someone has a grease trap and someone, if you've ever smelled, witnessed that, smelled that.
Yeah, it smelled.
It's horrible. And if that, times a million.
Right, that's right.
For the chicken plant.
It's just on a large scale.
Yeah. So, I mean.
And, and that's, that's the, the really pungent smell that we smell in town. I think it's when they're, when they're evacuating their, their sludge.
Hauling off, that's.
Right.
Yeah. The big old hoses are disconnected.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah. But I assume that's pretty true. I know that the sludge removal process.
Sure.
The tanks are open to air or at least have some.
They're not, they're not open air tanks. Um.
So the trucks are open to air?
No.
Air exchange.
No. So, and the, and the, I mean, it's, it's liquid essentially. So, um, the, the trucks themselves are tanker trucks. They're not open air either. But when you, you know, when you move a liquid from one tank to another, you have to allow air to exchange or you create a vacuum and it either won't flow or something breaks. Um, and so, you know, there's basically ventilation pipes or, you know, some, some way that air is allowed to escape and.
This could be handled because we know the other, you know, we always go to Northwest Arkansas. They don't have that problem. So they've got the solution figured out. So it's just gonna, it's gonna take money. But I think the conversation is, you know, we need to bring up the rates. Uh, uh, I think that's a, that's something. We need to at least have something that we can say, you know, our community, we want you guys to do the right thing. And, uh, but anyway, I think we talked about enough. But one other thing I wanna talk about that, and I probably did not report back, we still have, you know, they have a third party that hauls off their renderings and holds it off. And we've had spills there. The last spill, we actually, PD followed up on that. I don't know if, the thing about it, they drive off. And so they were, I'm not sure if a ticket was issued. Uh, I do not.
I don't know.
Tell them when to and what not to do. But they did call the company that actually did this fill and they followed. And the guy said that gentleman would be fired that because he was not even supposed to be on that road. He was right in front of the line.
Right.
If he did or not, like I said, we do follow up when there is something like that. If we get a complaint, I'll either make a call to the poultry or we call PD if it's something that's regulated on, on our streets or our highways.
Yeah. And, and that's a little bit different. That's not a pretreatment issue. That's a, you know, there's certain things that don't go into the, the, this, the waste, um, like the skin and fats oils and greases, we don't allow into the waste stream, um, guts. And that's what the mayor's talking about there. And those are open top trucks and they're not supposed to drive through town.
Yeah.
But they do. And if they have to get on Harrison Street and slam on their brakes because some little car cuts in front of them, then that stuff sloshes out of the truck into the roadway and it's a horrible mess. And it's, it stinks. Um, and so, yes. And the, um, mayor's right. Like the PD's knows, like they, they hunt them whenever it happens. But again, they slosh it out and they keep going. And so if they don't catch the guy in the act, it's hard for them to do anything to him.
They just turn on the windshield, windshield wipers and go on.
Keep going. I get.
Goes over the cab.
Yeah.
It's, it's pretty sad. All right. Lee A. Shon reports. Council comments.
Mr. Frederick?
None.
It's covered? None. Mr. Prue?
None.
Mr. Moody?
None.
Mr. Reeves?
None.
Mr. Roberts?
None. Hey, being no further business, is there a motion adjourned? So moved.
Second.
And motion second. All in favor signify the same. Ah, we are adjourned.